All right. The ball of the meeting, the call of the word of the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, where it stands that one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, full call. Tim Griffin here. So we have, first thing we have is approval of minutes. So we have the upcoming minutes from August 25th. So my train of mind is to accept those. Second? All right, all favorits? All right, and the September 8th minutes. I'm going to recede myself because I will have Peter's disease. So has everybody else seen a look up? And any change needed to be made?
Oh, there was, I think I already changed it. Yes.
Yeah, I already changed it.
All right, second? No favorit?
Aye.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I'm going to make a motion to seal the minutes from tonight, from 9:22 to 25, for five years, as it would adversely affect mostly the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Yes.
Okay.
Please have a motion.
Why do you need to make a motion? What's the reason for making a motion?
I did.
All right, why a second?
That's the sealers for five minutes, not five years.
Five years.
Uh, Rock saying yes.
I say yes.
Tim Griffin, yes?
Fine, yes.
Personal action forms.
I have one.
All right. So the new hire part time for the time partner. All right, Jean T. Sciver. Okay. So motion to accept this? I think we are accept this, all we have been signed. Right? Uh, next thing we have is infrastructure on Palm Road. Unfortunately, it was called, I've been sick for most of the past week and a half, but um, last meeting was called, at that time I had contacted the enhancements department of business and economic affairs, uh, to see what we can do to enhance or encourage infrastructure development on Palm Road. Additionally, it was called, I started communication with consolidating, who told me that through their premium fiber division, that they can offer enhanced upload and download speeds. And I've been actually, it was called, playing phone time with them to try and get somebody to confirm exactly where, for the locations, as to where they can have it. Um, like I said before, since I've been sick for most of the past two weeks, so I wasn't really able to follow too much with them, but I'm on the mend, so that's my goal for the upcoming week. So for our next meeting, you should have more information on that. What's that?
Who was the first company consolidated?
Consolidated, uh, the company is consolidated, their division is premium fiber, or you're talking about the division of?
Division, I believe the division of.
Where is it? The division of? All right, enhancement department of business and economic affairs.
Hmm, sorry.
No worries.
Department of business and economic affairs.
And if you want something like that before you would email.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Because there is other.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Yep. All right, um, insurance regarding steel vehicles being used, I think this is the volunteer personal policy, the thing we're looking at. The private law can do, let me hear it again. But we heard about from our lawyers, um, pretty much what the lawyer was saying is that the employees can volunteer their time, but they can't volunteer their time for doing things that they are obligated to do. Um, the example they used, if you look at the back, was the fair, fairly standard, it's not permitted an individual perform hours of volunteer service for the public agency when the hours involve the same type of services that the individual is employed to perform at the same public agency. Example would be a firefighter could volunteer to climb a ladder and a fire truck can paint a town building, but cannot volunteers respond as to press a fire on behalf of the town. The other thing that the lawyer suggested, or the lawyer wanted, you know, wanted in there is that the use of town vehicles and resources should be prohibited, and reason they give was that, um, directly sponsored or officially sponsored, it was called, their perception of bias, selective use of town equipment and vehicles for certain volunteer activities or causes, no matter how well intentioned, can lead to the perception of favoritism or bias among residents. Even if political causes, uh, political causes are prohibited, community members may still disagree on what is considered appropriate, which may turn and result in public dissatisfaction. For future perception of bias, the town would have to create, uh, create a procedure for determining when to directly sponsor or officially support volunteer activities. This process in addition to the approval process for exceptions to general rule, would likely create administrative burden. This burden, uh, this would be especially discussed for a town lacking a town administrator or manager. Also maintenance or repairs that incurred during the approved use could not be the responsibility of the volunteer organization, town cannot assign costs or liabilities to third parties, such as volunteer organizations without third party's consent. Monetary growth slides, even if an employee of the third party were to cover the costs incurred by using the town equipment or vehicles for volunteer activities, the resulting need for maintenance or repair would render an equipment or vehicle out of commission and unable for town use during maintenance or repair.
So what I'm understanding on this Tim is that, you know, town equipment can be used for any?
Volunteer.
Which is like the Easter, like?
The Christmas and Santa.
That's?
The Fourth of July parade over at the?
That's what seems like lawyers' help, too.
And the red picture truck. So I think we need to do some near the change now.
Yeah.
All right, this is?
That's a big thing for our small town.
I agree. I agree, and I would hate to see that lost, but I would ask to reach out to these artists of, get their suggestions on this.
I don't agree with it.
And this is what they came back with. So. All right, what's up, we can reach out to them and find out if we can, for example, towns watching, it's towns watching some activity, such as?
Right.
You know, so the firefighters, Santa Claus or something like that, that's different than the volunteer.
Again, that's volunteering, I mean, I see that was one thing. I would be curious, um, when Andrea was here, what, a month ago or something, she said that we that the town head looked into this already and had written responses from the volunteer company and what's up. I hope we should table and you gotta?
Well, I'm happy to table.
Digging.
Yeah. But like I said, these are their responses that I would ask to get, so. Whether I agree with it or not, I want you guys to have the information.
Thank you.
All right. So looking at that further, the VAE is on thing, Mike's not being here, we're gonna table that until he's here. Cunningham Security.
Is he doing that too?
I don't know what he?
No, I think this was where Scott had told us, he had given us the information a couple of weeks, probably a month ago now, regarding Cunningham taking over, I think, and Kurt and Phil filling the holes, he informed Scott.
So this was, this was, this was the fire service, so?
Yeah.
The town put security and fire and flood, um, service in, in buildings. The company that we had went bankrupt. So they sold out the security side of it, uh, to Cunningham, but they never sold out the fire monitoring side. Yeah. So at this point, Cunningham does all of our security, um, I was tasked with getting quotes to have Cunningham take over the fire monitoring side of it. So we got those quotes to put all of that back online as far as monitoring those, because there's currently no monitoring on that side. Uh, and then the other aspect that we did was we also got a quote from them as far as uh, the security side of things at the police department, because the police department is still currently using Burns Security. Right, we have to, we have to do, right? So we got a quote on the security, so for all of the public buildings out there, for the police department, it was strictly just the fire and flood, and then for the police department, it was just uh, security, basically staying with Burns or? It's actually moving that over to Cunningham as well, um, just so it was all under one umbrella. What we found out there was getting the quotes because they offer different services. One quote was a little bit more as far as annually, uh, the other one was cheaper annually, staying with Burns was cheaper annually, but to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish, there was an upfront cost, as far as upgrading the panels. Right, but then we found out that what's called dealing upfront cost was actually any cheaper than the? In the, in the long run, it does pan out better for us to stay with Burns, and that's just changeover. Go ahead. But that's what the, that's what the, the two things were, so I think the biggest thing on the table right now isn't so much the police department's security, because we have security, it's uh, it's more making a decision on what you guys want to do as far as fire and flood monitor. The systems are all installed and operational, they're just currently not being monitored. Meaning, in other words, if the building starts, catches fire, the building is getting called and notified. We can compare it, especially if you're in the fire department. What's that? If you have to compare it, it's being at the fire department. So it's, it's one of those things where it would rely on local residents and pass the fire, calling the fire. Do you want to move forward with the? Our hiring requirement? I don't have the quotes in front of me, I know I provided it to you guys, but I don't have the ability to get the numbers again.
So we'll just, I think maybe we'll have the numbers at the next meeting and make that decision then.
Okay. All right.
Before we move on, sorry, um, so the volunteer thing, I know that we're talking about, we're gonna talk about it at the next meeting, however, um, the young gentleman from the Eagle Scout project has asked for a load of dirt for the walkway, and also John Mullin has asked us to make a decision regarding the stormwater, so, um.
Well, the load, I mean, the load of dirt for the, what's that Eagle Scout, and could that both be done during this hour?
But that would be volunteering, correct?
No, it's under this hour.
If we chose it, there were, might not, that would be hauling dirt anyway.
Well, the Eagle Scout is, the Eagle Scout is a separate thing, this is a?
Right, so I guess the question is, is when the dirt would be hauled, whether, so is the Eagle Scout expecting the dirt to be hauled when they're in their volunteering, or is he okay with it if he is hauled beforehand and wear it when he wanted to?
So if he, yeah, I mean, if he wants it there, Monday is the third day.
It's not big of a pile, because, you know, you have a pretty big pile of things, a lot of time to meet it, that's all, so that would be, I guess. If he can get it beforehand, during working hours, then I think that's fine, is that what we're saying? But if it wasn't done when they're volunteering, but?
You want to?
Yeah, it's based off of this, it's, I don't know.
Monday through Thursday. I know they're having a lot of, of crap. So what about the stormwater?
Again, I come out to you, it was called, he didn't, you have the, was called, I would want permission to work on that during this hour, and which means it's not volunteering.
Well, we can find out what it is that they're looking for, if you're looking for? We'll get an estimate of the time, that's what we spent, then we can determine, you know, some time, you know, to move forward with having them do that part of, kind of kind of work, having, having the storm marshal, having to get somebody to come in.
And there's anything worth, 20 yards of?
They're looking for, um, one and a half washstone, and Dan said that we could do that.
So yeah.
And then three quarters, we don't know three eighths, but three quarters of washstone, 25 cubic yards, we could do that.
And we have that drop off.
And then the hauling of it, which we could do, but that would be, that wouldn't be in kind hours, I would think, if they're working.
Well, that would be an in-kind donation as to their salary. So it's kind of like what's called?
So that they're not?
So it'd be kind of like my work on, work on like a marine project in the market, or what's called the town, but what's called working with the 300 committee, so my eyes consider to be an in-kind donation from the town to that committee. So like the same thing, where the highway is hard, it's time to be considered an in-kind donation to what's called this project. Because they're not giving money to the market, but we should be giving them.
So are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
I'll make a motion, last second.
Um, one time.
Yeah, no, it's been two weeks, I get it, you're the class, though. So all is in favor?
Aye.
I will, I, here, I'll give this, we can say like that, okay?
You want to add John Mullin out?
Yes, I will. Thank you, I'll be happy with that. Thank you.
All right. Swear again. Man's oath. The oath of? Goodbye. And speak. All right, so, and, aye?
Aye. Man's oath.
You solemnly sincerely swear.
You solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully?
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge of the form?
Discharge of the form.
All the divisions and covenants?
All the divisions and covenants.
Upon me, as a police officer?
Upon me, as a police officer.
So the town will build him?
The town will build him.
New Hampshire? According to the best?
According to the best.
Of my abilities?
Of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules?
Agreeable to the rules.
And regulations?
And regulations.
Of this constitution?
Of this constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the United, of the state of New Hampshire?
Of this state of New Hampshire.
So help me God?
So help me God.
This I do?
This I do.
Under the pains?
Under the pains.
And penalties of perjury?
And penalties of perjury.
Thank you. So I can have you sign that. Yep. Will Scott send you a picture of this? Are you a workaholic, officer? Scott?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Griffin?
Yes. So I want to thank you for you guys, a few weeks back, the car, I'll tell you on the card, um, after reviewing the budget and reviewing the expenditures from now through the end of the year, for that before you propose a purchase of the cruiser out of the budget. As opposed to utilizing the detail for.
So the cruiser fund, they're moving that before this?
Originally, originally, we were going to outfit it out of the budget?
Right.
And purchase the vehicle out of the cruiser fund?
Yep.
Um, after evaluating the budget and, and looking through the end of this calendar year, um, I believe that we can absolutely purchase the cruiser out of the budget and leave that money in the cruiser fund for future, future developments.
So you want to purchase and outfit the cruiser out of the general public?
I, I, I.
Here, please, fight.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I'm not making the motion to you, boy, I need your, you can, to purchase the police.
All favorit? Aye. Okay.
Perfect, Kim has the purchase orders, so.
I'll, you're right.
So if you have any questions on it, uh, just for the general public, if you're curious, uh, the purchase cost on the new car, uh, $34,997 is final cost, less outstanding. Thank you.
Um, you have comments, you guys don't mind, I'd like to start off by thanking everybody who participated in the Eagle Scout project this past, or last weekend. The trail from the, uh, what's called, from school to the town hall looks amazing, finding that you were there, you discussed an amazing job of that. So, um, all right, so, everyone, you guys?
Um, September 27th, right here, 3:05, I'm at the Sun, you're part of Chili Chatter with the thought for the rap, um, you know, a lot of contestants, but look at that song, we're willing to take more than we're willing to mix the chili chowder, see if we can win. Um, Scott's doing it.
Okay. What's the problem?
Uh, trophies.
So are you still interested, are you still a jerk?
Yeah, we just want to enter, we want to enter. Tom and Eric before. Um, like, I'm good and hot, cool, so people can come and try it, um, and then people come in and try it, and it's all free to come here and taste it, and then pick your winners.
Yeah, who's that?
How the people that taste it.
Yeah, it's ice cream.
And it's all free, bring that and jerk, free up.
All for dinner?
Yep.
All right.
And we might have select of our ice creams, ice creams, so, so, if you're wanting kids.
Um, go ahead. I just want to say that the parking lot looks amazing, it looks great, and, um, they have started on grid room with the roadside mower.
Okay, um, so I have, I provided you earlier, but I, uh, sweep with, um, the budget template, so I tried to update, there are a couple lines that I made, because they're the ones I think we need to, that we probably should just get rid of, so I've added those back in so you can see which ones those are, and, um, permanent area, I worked on the warrant articles, so to step it out. So, um, I know the budget committee is, the budget committee has asked that, you know, we try to come up with a number, so if you guys can work through this, and so that we can, uh, kind of have numbers for them, go through it for the next meeting?
Yes.
Start, have that process. The next thing I have is, um, the fire chief reached out to me and said that he wants to start going from this month going forward, he's foreboding his cell phone stagnant, and that can just be absorbed into the, um, fire department, um, line, to be absorbed somewhere else, that he does not need it, he doesn't want it, so, just, you know, that sort of thing. And then the next item is, I know it took, uh, about two months ago, we, you gave us a first read on personnel policy?
Yes.
And so, just sort of come down this new way, we were, basically, we make the recommendations and I?
Yep, we can, we'll call that, that's where we're agreeing that thing.
And then the last study was, uh, the full-time temporary, if you want to announce that.
Oh, full-time temporary, I have.
I'm just, be crazy, look that up.
Well, it's posted tomorrow. So it's a full-time temporary, what? How a position?
Probably even be my number four.
All right, all right, so now, there, uh, if we're, you guys?
Yes, I'm following.
All right. Full comment?
Do you have any answers to that? I have to say, request that I sent in?
Yes, I actually sent you a, um, email this evening, Rick, I know I had sent you one earlier stating that we needed to look into it, I still have to speak to, um, employees, and then you will receive the compensation.
And that's a five-day window?
Yeah.
Five days?
Yeah.
You're going over it in five minutes?
What's that?
It's like a five-day window, you know, you don't have time to, to, you know, come up with it in two weeks, the R S A states, you don't have the information within five days.
Yes, the R S A states that you need to be answered within five days, and you're being answered within 48 hours.
Information I would have in five days.
No.
Okay? We'll find out about that.
Yes, and here's, if you'd like a paper copy, Kim would be more than that.
I have the others, I have the R S A's, I do need the information.
No, I'm talking about the, the information will be a dollar version. It was empty.
Whatever it is, I'll pay it.
Okay.
And then just a little bit of point of interest on the transportation, the parking lot, your, uh, stove prevention plan for your fuel line over there, required you, you did that, to do that on the cement pad, when you see a gas station, so if anything leaked over there from a film vehicle, it's contained. Your grandfather told that was to be done, so now, your inspection is not going to pass, you'll probably get shut down over there, and you'll have to go get your fuel at the gas station somewhere. So a little more research, should have been done on that, and is that, when you update it, because these people are going to be, they'll be walking around here anytime, and that's going to be a big, big red flag.
That was engineered by a multi-lineman company.
It should have been engineered for that pad, because when gas station, new people come around, and inspection to D E S, I would assure you that that won't pass that way. And there would be paper, and then you'd, all the gases would do the same thing, because a lot cheaper, and that's why we couldn't afford to do it, when we had an out plan, that was one of the things that made it, so we couldn't afford it, well, back then, $50,000 it was going to cost us to do this, but that was too much then, I don't even want to know these right now. I don't even want to know this right now.
Can you stretch that back to the, it's all the communication, podium fiber?
Yes.
Does the town get a commission for each person that signs off?
No. No.
Well, I would say, second, uh, pay, the town obviously, they, they pay.
Right, so a lot of towns, they have, they have a holiday, a franchise agreement.
Right, right.
Which then was happy to take a percentage of what the lost third cable subscribers to the town, let's say franchise fee. Unfortunately, Milton does not have that.
Wow, so does Spectrum pay the town admission?
Of payments, no.
Wow, oh, it's interesting, they would pick and choose towns.
And it goes back to what's going with franchise agreement, so, so.
Yeah. Oh, and one, one last question, the old, the honest service, uh, won its spot in the Z A C O, was that true, again, for the, the new producer?
No.
Why is the disposition that?
Uh, we, the, what's called, open up, right? So we need to, uh, four, fifth, so we need information about that, so we can do that.
Yeah, I'm just going to pull mine, we'll jump in.
Okay.
And decide a progress for the first thing of that.
I have a question, I've been listening lately, and we're supposed to be finding out about the trash pickup and stuff, and who's starting to be doing it. Have we gone to any other companies other than the one we have, we're going through now? Have we checked with waste management? And it's like, I looked online, and there's like six different other companies, trash companies. Have we got bids from anybody else, or is it just a seller? Because all I ever hear is just a seller, a seller, and I just wondered if we have any other bids on the trash other than...
That's something that's a little crazy. Well, we looked into, we had...
They never, they never came back with a report.
Yeah, but if they don't, didn't call back, then you should get, send somebody there, or maybe send somebody there to pop them?
Might have reached out several times. It was their choice, not ours.
Do you have someone to look at the grader, or do you just put it on there now?
No, that was never made a motion, that don't mean it was...
It's like a two means and a lot now.
Yes, it's never been made a motion.
Well, then how do we make a motion, somebody do something, then we might find that.
The warrant is not made a motion.
It's one, more than that. All right, that's not, that's supposed to be you guys last week, or we still. So is one of the motions, do I have somebody looking greater, or?
Is it going to be cost associated with that?
I don't know.
Yes, it will be. I mean, why should, he can't, why should he do it for free, because he doesn't work for the town.
The warrant is out, too, they didn't find out either from the homeowner or from somebody else, but what's going on with the whip, or?
I mean, did Scott, did you have to pay to have them know, do you have bruises?
When I have the, most parts.
When value, because of transition, all that stuff, he wasn't going to value it, you paid her, right?
Yep. Well, we paid to have the transition looked at and died in the process.
Do they have a break? I can ask Dan, I, I want to make a motion personally, myself, to reach out to this gentleman if the intent is not to repair it.
Well, we need to figure out what the, that will be.
Okay, I'll reach out to him.
Well, last time we, we asked about that, and Dan said that it was a piece of junk, and it needed all kinds of work and stuff. So he didn't want it, he wanted to just bid it out. We as a townspeople, you need a grader to do the roads and stuff, you don't do it the way they're doing it right now. I mean, it'd be worth having that checked out, and then you could actually get more money for it if you were going to bid it out after, that you were, that you were involved.
How long is it to work, and probably be the same amount of day worked this winter, they're going to stay on four, ten hour days?
I believe so, yes.
You think that's cost effective?
What's that?
You think that's cost effective? I've gone around, there's no other town that does that. A lot of towns would do your four day work weeks, and now they're staying four, ten hour day in the winter. And if you look at the numbers, you'll see what? You're ninety-three thousand dollars for a mortgage in this town. It's definitely going to be the new, the overtime, and Friday, right after midnight, that's overtime. I tried to do that, there's no way possible you're going to do that, because it's not cost effective. So I'm going to try to recommend somehow that they go back for the winter hours, like every other town does. I mean, they could go six to two thirty, six to two, shortening on the other end, but it's nice to be here, we're more than anyways by four. So here at six, and then how many stay one to overtime, right, ten. So you can do it any way you want, but this way is not cost effective.
Mrs. Jimmy, do you have like a whole heart figure of what the fire monitor is putting in?
We have, we have, we have the post, everybody next to me, not next to the food, uh, oh, yeah, what's that, he did give us the post.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is like over five thousand dollars?
I don't remember, you lost it either, how I keep to say anything wrong, so.
Well, I, I know customarily, I would have any, any, anything, uh, or usually if we're on R I P, or whatever, supposedly, but anything for five thousand dollars, they customarily?
Yes, we have that whole fee as well.
In the past, have they gone to four tens all winter, or is that something new they're trying?
Maybe for three years.
It wasn't like that before, so I'd like to see what the numbers would look like if we went back and looked at what the overtime cost when they were on five days versus four in the winter. I, I can tell you, I work for a town, I've never heard of a town staying on winter, like, having those hours in the winter. Because pretty much every single day of the winter, you're out there treating the roads, checking them. So we're guaranteeing them overtime on a Friday every week.
Okay, so that's something we're definitely going to look into. So, so we want to look into the difference between four days versus five days.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know of any town around here that stays on four days a week in the winter. Buses run five days a week, so you can guarantee they should be checking them roads five days a week before those kids go home. Or at minimum, if we know there's storm coming, be ready.
Yeah. Uh, Rick, I'm going to go with Pauline first, and then go back to you.
Pauline, Brian, have we, uh, two things, have we got enough data on the Lions Club stuff?
No, yeah, I don't remember that one.
Have we reached out?
Um, right under, because the email, I misplaced it, and I'm looking for it.
So I have Mary's information under charge, I can give it to you if you'd like to. I have her cell phone number, and she gives her Facebook right away, the Lions Club one. Um, the other question is, my stuff is not noted in the minutes from the last meeting regarding it, and I, I want that updated. So we need to get that, please. Because I've actually talked to quite a few other residents who, they were the ones that brought it to Mary and asked about this, so.
It wasn't Mary I talked to, it was Natalie, I believe?
Yep, they work together, they, they are joint. So I have Mary's information, and she said if you need Natalie, she can give it as well.
Okay.
Going with your stuff made during the poll comment?
Yeah, that'd be it.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, what meeting was that you had?
It was the last meeting, it happened, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll see it here. Okay.
Oh, I just actually, I was, I've been here, um, I was on the E P every day, and it was made note in it, um, and I'm not as proud of him, he must be feeling a little, uh, but it's like, when you have minutes, you have to think your start time, so.
And time and report that, yeah.
Yes, and then it needs to be, the home's recording, it needs to put there, you don't need to sign, you just need to put your name in, you go to minute here, so.
Yeah, I saw that, uh, what's called the email of all this, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I could talk about this, I'm interested in that.
This is quite a question, you have some of that information that I need, and you put that up here at the town office?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It is in your email box.
Okay, and you need any more information from whom, the town employees?
I was asked by legal to reach out to the town employees.
So you don't know what they make an hour, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
You don't know what they make an hour, or?
That, what they make an hour is in your email.
Okay, so what are you, what are you going to ask them about, the overtime, who keeps track of that, who keeps track of that?
Both the town secretary and the department heads.
So you're going to need to ask the employees on their overtime, that's pretty interesting.
No, it's legal, ask me to reach out regarding the specific, I'm not going to get into the specific, it's legal. But as soon as I do that, you will have that reach.
Do you know what your policy said, right? Your personal policy, that's, that's right now. Before you answer the question in overtime, you're going to read that.
Any more, any more, Pauline, what? All right, well, is, seeing or, it's seven nineteen, do I have a motion to you? All right, go to the bill.